Alrighty, it is 10 o'clock. Please silence and shut off your cell phones because we will pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item on the agenda is CRF grant to 530 ratification. That is... I'm curious on that, that grant. Now, did we have this in an earlier board discussion?
No, I had Brad sign it the other day and I sent it off.
Okay.
Or you didn't send it off.
Alright.
But we need to ratify it.
Yes, thank you.
This is for, here the dollars for businesses impacted by coronavirus. I think the total sum is 5,000, 500,000.
Yes.
Perfect. Is what this is.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion for 30. Good morning, Melanie. Uh, sorry, Betty. How are you, Betty?
You're on mute.
Uh, she's on mute, yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
So, go ahead.
I'll entertain a motion if you like.
So do we need, I guess we can do this in the conversation after, or?
Yeah, we have, we just have to ratify the CRF.
So I'll make a motion to accept the CRF number 2530.
Okay, I'll second the motion for the CRF grant to 2530 to rat for full ratification. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for that getting that on there, Melanie. I wasn't sure when we were going to be able to do that. Second thing on the agenda is the SCOED IGA. That is for our discussion now that Betty is on the line. So I'll start off real quick. I went over this today with Ann. I'm just kind of reading through it. We have a draft agreement that I had just sent you prior to the meeting and we have the IGA as well. So...
Correct.
Is there, I'll just go right to it. Is there anything that holds us back from just doing the draft agreement? Or do we have to have the IGA as well to accompany that?
It is totally the policy of county. Klamath County required me to do the IGA.
Got it.
So I, so I basically took the one that I had with them, updated it to Lake County's specifics, but it's not necessary for me as long as there is an agreement, you know, that's signed by the county that we will get, you know, that we will be the one to get the funds out. And all of the, all of the other contracts I've had with Business Oregon and others did require an IGA. So that, that's basically the standing operating procedure for most of the contracts I have.
Okay, so under the, under the IGA, under section E, it does list the grant, of course, that we just fully ratified. So that it is specific to that. One other thing I wanted to, under subsection A, it says whereas economic development is important to Klamath County. Should that be switched to link?
That should be changed to link. I ran a self, or a search and thing, but I guess I missed one. Sorry about that.
No worries at all.
Yep.
So my application chair, I didn't get a chance to look at that.
That, no worries at all.
The draft agreement.
You're more than welcome to have that because I've read it a couple times. So going over to the draft agreement then, because I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable with the IGA at this point. Unless there's anything that Commissioner Albertson might have questions on. But going back to the draft agreement, the first item that I highlighted was, uh, was when it specifies the FTE. So businesses with two or fewer FTE, it was originally at 5,000 and I was wondering if we could put it up to 10,000.
That, that is your call totally. I just, what, what I sent you was what Klamath County had come up with. But that's not, you know, every county is doing something different. So that's your call totally.
So, go ahead, one second.
Sure.
So on the IGA and your draft agreement with Lake County, when it talks about compensation for SCOED, which I have no problem with, on your IGA it says $65 an hour not to exceed 28,000. But on your draft agreement, it says $65 an hour not to exceed 30,000.
I forgot to change that. When I sent it originally to Ann, she came back and said it was 5% and I had, so I dropped it down to the 28, which is the 5% maximum can be used.
Okay, so 28,000 is the...
28, yes, 28 is, is, was the... And I will, I will make those changes to that, to the draft agreement also.
Okay, thank you. So going back to what you stated on, that's on page, should be on page one. On the, so, go ahead. What I would like to do is eliminate one and two and make the cap 20,000. And you don't have to have employees.
Okay, so everyone would get 20? Is that what I'm understanding?
So, so this is my thought and I'm just thinking out loud. So we have 569,031 dollars. If everybody got, that applies, got 20,000, 28 businesses would receive 20, $20,000. If we don't use that amount of money and we have leftover money, the people that have lost more than $20,000 can recoup some more money if, if they have lost more than $20,000 and that we have a surplus amount of money left. I can't think of the dang word. You see what I'm saying? So like if a, if a business lost $50,000 and, and we have money left in that fund, but they only received 20, they could receive more money once everybody's applied and got $20,000.
Most of the businesses, you know, we've done over 300 grants in the last, excuse me, three months. Most of the businesses that we have worked with have not lost that because we've been limited to businesses with 25 or fewer employees. And most of them, their total income for the year, or revenue for the year is more like 5,000 a month and, or less. Some of them actually. So that, that's why I'm not sure how we, if you want us to document that they have lost that in the last year or, you know, or if you want us to just assume everyone.
This is my concern, Betty, is I want everybody that applies to get a minimum of 20,000. If there happens to be any businesses that have lost more than 20,000,
Okay.
they can get part of anything that's left over. You see what I'm saying? Up to 50,000. And so...
So would you like it on a first come, first served basis? Or, because that's, we've done both. We're looking at kind of a, if they were shut down here, this is just for example, here in Klamath, if they were shut down, they automatically get $5,000. You know, the most current executive order. And then if they can document employees, which we require, we had to require that they document how many employees they have, they can get up to 2,000 per employee. So I think the largest grant we've made to date is about 28,000 to any businesses in our region. So, but we do have, you know, we have paid out a lot of $10,000 type of grants, but not a whole lot over 10.
These...
But that, that's, like I said, we just need to have the parameters put in writing so that everyone understands what the application involves. And so if you were just doing a flat 20,000, you don't care how many employees they have, then, then we can do that if that's what you wish.
So is the requirement on knowing how many employees they have or making sure that they meet certain thresholds? Is that a requirement that's just Klamath County has put in place or is...
It's the one that we were following under the Business Oregon criteria because that's what they wanted. And so we have, the application reflects that. But from this, these funds, I don't, I haven't seen anything in writing that requires you to document that.
See, see, that's what I mean. This is different requirements. There is no requirement that I've seen anyways that requires you to have any employees or...
Correct.
One and two in this draft agreement, there's nothing in writing that says you have to have employees. And so we have a lot of mom and pop shops that
Right.
don't have any employees that haven't been receiving any funds. I'm going to use another example, not on the employees, but like the Elks Lodge here in Lakeview, who would qualify under the 501(c)(3). They've, they've closed in Lakeview and they need more than $10,000. And also I'm trying to do is be fair, but I don't want any of this money left over either.
No, I, I understand that. We don't have a whole lot of time to get it out either.
And so, but I'm afraid if we raise the cap too high, then some of them won't get applied in time and they'll be out. And so these are my, the problems I'm having right now. If you guys have a better idea, I think everybody should get 20 grand. Every business that applies gets 20 grand. If there's money left over and they can prove that they've had more than a $20,000 loss, we can provide that much more to them. Do you see what I'm saying? If they have a $30,000 loss, they'll get another 10,000 bucks.
Do you want to, do you want to count those businesses in Lake County that have received funding already from through our SCOED programs?
No. I want anybody that gyms and restaurants and bars to be first, like you have in here.
Okay.
But anybody can apply and if, if there's $20,000 left over for each business that applies that isn't a gym or a restaurant and bar and there's money available, they should get that after
Okay.
we've taken care of our restaurants and bars. You see what I'm saying? I'm trying not to make it confusing, but I'm trying to make it so that everybody...
No, I, I understand. Your priority is the ones that recently closed because of the executive order.
Right.
Automatic, automatic planning, is what you're saying?
Right.
And then second priority would be businesses that don't fit that description.
Exactly.
But who have, but who can show a loss or do you want to document their profit and loss statement?
Yes, I think we have to do that.
Yeah, okay.
What's going to happen is, is some of these businesses that can't show a loss at the end of this, at the end of the year, and they received $20,000, they're going to have to show that as income. And so...
Right, we do issue 1099s to them, so they will have, they will be required to report this as income. Yes.
Okay, so are we good with 20 grand?
Yeah, I'm fine with 20 grand.
And then if they have additional losses, they can get any of the left over.
Okay, so would you say the loss would be on a yearly basis? Because we've just been looking at a month-to-month comparison.
Yeah, I would say, I would say on the year.
Okay, okay.
And then they could compare it with their previous year loss or gain. Is that...
Yeah. So, the previous year or the previous, oh, because I think what the, the method you have right now is they have to show a month from a prior year and show losses within at least a month in this year, in comparison to the same time year.
So how we do that is from March until, from March until the end of this year. And then that way, because of the, we didn't get these orders until March of this year.
Right.
And so if they can show losses from March of 2019 to the beginning of 20, because that's when all this, yeah, started happening. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, the, the primary issue we have is getting proper documentation for that because a lot of businesses actually don't have this year's information because they depend on their taxes, you know, to do that. So...
So would it be better to go month to month?
Would it be better to go month to month then, Betty?
You're, you're muted again, Betty.
You're muted again, Betty.
Sophisticated businesses will be able to show us, you know, ongoing profit and loss statements, but most of the businesses only have get bank statement. Yeah. It's been challenging to get the information, you know, from some of the smaller businesses just because they don't, they're not as sophisticated. So that, that's just a complication we've worked around, but I, you know, it's, it's one that I can see potentially if they're having to prove a loss over the year more than 20. But they probably, if they have lost more than that, have the bookkeeping system set up so that they know where they're at. It is just my comment.
So what, what, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think she's right. Small businesses that are not very sophisticated, I hope are not going in the hole that far after the programs that have already been released. So people should be able to document more than a $20,000 loss over last year. They should, they should be a professional business in place enough to prove that, I would think.
So do you think the yearly thing would work?
Yeah.
Okay. So we're going to do it from last year, from March until January 1? And so this year, Janu-, March to January 1?
Probably November 30th because there's, we're still in first part of December.
Okay, because yeah, because we're still in first part of December. It would be from January...
To December.
Yeah, from Mar-, from March to November 30th, basically, of the year before and the same for this year as well.
Right.
So if I'm hearing this right, we're looking at removing the language prior to, I think it's in that first two. Yeah, prior to one and two. That first paragraph, everything where it says awards to be eligible businesses will be made as a grant, leave that. The amount of the grant will be, I put in some language here, based on the following figures. And then we go down and we, we list our own one and two, which would be all businesses that closed. They'd be eligible for up to 20,000, correct?
I don't think we're going to say all businesses that closed.
That were forced to close.
I think it's all businesses
Or that were affected.
that have received losses due to COVID-19. Otherwise, some businesses can stay open.
No, you're fine, yeah.
But they, they have to do takeout, which reduces the number of, of, you see what I'm saying?
All businesses with losses, they're eligible for up to 20,000, right, right there. And then the second part of that is if businesses can show losses beyond that, they'd be eligible for up to what?
50.
Do you want a first come, first served basis on, on that requirement? Because at that point, everyone's typically already likely received 20,000, but depending on how much is left.
I don't know how to move that.
Well, basically it'd just be if businesses can show losses beyond that 20,000 that they already received, they'd be eligible for an additional grant of up to 50,000. But that would be based on a first come, first served criteria.
True.
Yes.
Okay.
Would that work, Betty?
Yep, we just have to know the parameters we're working under and I kind of like the bigger numbers because I was, I'm a little concerned with the, you know, getting out. But even you, you've got a, a half million dollars, you can still serve 100 businesses at 50 each.
No, you can only serve...
Just a second, let me get my calculator here.
You can only serve 10, Betty.
Or 11. 11, we could, it's 560.
Divided by, yeah, okay, so...
But at 20, we would have a little bit more room with our businesses.
Yeah.
At 20, we could serve 20 businesses.
We have probably, probably have three applications already in hand from Lake County. So, you're probably would, but if we're not including the ones we've already given funds to, that would mean that there's like Hunter's Hot Springs and a couple of others. But there's a couple in, one in Paisley.
Pioneer's Hall.
Couple, couple from Christmas Valley. So 10, you know, will go really fast. But you'll have the funds out.
So I'm fine with the eligibility requirements. When we get to the Lake County perimeters for funday, funding, I'd like to eliminate number four and five, which state no prior funding from SCOED of Business Oregon under the Business Oregon Emergency Grant Program has been received and is eligible to be made on a lottery basis on fully completed applications received by 5:00 PM on December 23rd.
So you are wanting us to fund as we receive applications that are complete?
I think so.
Until the funds are gone?
Yep. Is that...
And, and if they have received, say, 10,000 from us prior, should we adjust so that they are not getting, you know, like if they've got 10,000, would we just cap them at 10 from you or not? Because we could send emails to everyone who's already received one and have more than 10 applications. We, we've already funded close to 25, I think.
I don't know. That's a good question. I know, I know a couple of the businesses have already received about 10,000 through SCOED already. So do you want to keep that within the parameters of 20,000? And just give them an extra 10?
What if they've had more losses than...
Well, if they've had, right, but then they're getting 30,000 if you keep them at the 20,000. And then beyond that, we're looking at the additional 50,000 if they can prove that losses is greater than 30,000. Yeah, I, I don't either. It's a good question.
And do you have any?
I just think from a logistical standpoint, December 23rd is the date.
Yeah.
And their ability to reach out to people that have already applied speeds up the whole process. So I think we, we we need to involve that whole group no matter what.
Mm-hmm.
I think you're fine if you say they have to prove losses greater than 20,000 to get something over what they've already received plus 10,000. I think that's fair. Because you also want to be fair.
Right, right.
So I think that, you know, makes them prove what their losses are and get funding too.
So it's, so you're saying to adjust basically?
I agree.
Go back down just to 10,000, keep it at that 20,000? And then if they can prove losses over that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Betty, did you catch all that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, and, and my understanding is then we will not be required to, to document how many employees, although we do have to ask them how much because we have to report that to the... Yeah, so, but we will have to document losses over $20,000. If they are automatically shut down, they get 20,000 plus anything they can document over that 20. If they were not forced to shut down, they, they would have to document their, their, at least a 25% loss to get the 20. And if they have more than 50,000 or 30,000, 20,000, sorry, more than 20,000, they would have to show what that loss, revenue loss was for the year.
Okay.
Is, am I correct on that?
So on the 25%, so say they've lost 15%. Because that's, that's in your eligibility requirement. If they've lost, if they've lost less than 25%, is there some way that we can still get a, the amount that they've lost even if it doesn't meet the 25% requirement loss?
Yeah, it will mean a little more subjective decision-making, but we can, we can...
I'm trying not to make this confusing for anybody, but...
No, no, I know. I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to think through, you know, what, what our, our process has been in the past, it will be, this will be a little different than the past. So I think the main thing we, we need to get is they have to self-certify that they are legal businesses. We do document that they are registered with the Secretary of State or the IRS for a 501(c)(3). That is one requirement. The second one then is showing losses or showing that they have to close. So the ones like the gyms and the restaurants, do you, do you only want the restaurants, bars? And do you want restaurants and bars in this round to be automatically qualified?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the restaurants have to do takeout and some of them weren't equipped to do takeout.
Well, we have the draft, draft language. It does actually say that we're even giving them priority.
Yes.
So both restaurants and bars that were required to close for indoor dining will be given priority. You have that language in the draft.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
And but going, well, going, coming back to the 25% real quick. You have, you have a number of eligibility requirements. One is it has to be headquartered here in Oregon.
That is correct.
And yeah.
That's in your contract.
Right, correct. And of course, the, you know, they have to be registered with the Secretary of State's office here in Oregon. The business is either for profit or entity tax exempt under the 501(c)(3) status, which of course, like the Elks and Eagles would, would qualify. Then it goes, a business was adversely affected in either one of the following two ways. And then it gives it two criteria under that. One of them is the business can demonstrate a one-month decline in sales of 25%.
Right.
Or more.
And, and so...
And so going, so you're curious if we can lower that percentage?
Yes, I wonder if, do we have to have it? Does it have to be 25%?
Is there a federal or state requirement that places that at 25%?
I couldn't find anything in writing, but they, they do have to document that they had a loss because of COVID. That's the language that I've seen.
So would you guys be...
I've never seen a percentage, but they do have to document there was a loss because some businesses actually have done better, like my husband's business. So, you know, it's like, we can't just give money to people who haven't been...
Right, no, they have to document an actual loss due to COVID.
Yeah, so would you guys be comfortable in removing the, a decline in sales and get rid of, and remove the 25% or more? Just as long as...
Will they do it?
Just as long as the business can demonstrate a one-month decline in sales by the COVID pandemic.
Yep.
And eliminate a 25% or more.
Okay, yeah.
It just shows a loss.
Yep.
They, they have to, they have to show you a loss, but it doesn't have to be 25%.
Okay, we can take that out.
Sounds good. I think that's the only thing that I have to remember.
Yeah, actually, that was one of my last issues. That the, the one above that though, going back to the subsection A of that same section, number four. Um, yeah, actually, that was one of my last issues that the, the one above that, though, going back to the subsection A of that same section, number four. Uh, I included, um, executive order twenty dash twenty-seven. Twenty dash sixty-five and, uh, twenty dash sixty-six. Because in twenty dash sixty-six, she actually rescinded, um, twenty-seven and sixty-five. Um, and everything is operating under sixty-six now. So I just said, if you could sustain any losses due to any of these, oper, uh, a, any of the businesses that were prohibited from operating under any of these executive orders, including the one that we are currently under, which is sixty-six. Just wanted to make sure that we covered our bases, including all the active and rescinded executive orders.
Okay, that will, I assume apply to anyone who closed because they thought they had to, even if they really didn't have to.
Yeah.
Because we get that a lot. People, you know, consider themselves, you know, they closed, but they didn't have to close.
Mm-hmm.
Specifically, but a lot of people did because they, they thought that it applied to them. So I, I think what I'm hearing is that anyone who closed because of COVID.
Or sustained losses because of COVID.
And sustained losses should get the funding.
Yep.
We've also had, we have some seasonal businesses that, you know, are only operating seasonally. They're okay too, if they can show losses.
I'm fine with that.
Like, like, yeah. Because we have forestry folks and others that, um, you know, didn't, couldn't get into the woods because of criteria, you know, of that they had to meet and things, so, so we, we've talked to some of those folks too.
Betty, thank you so much for picking this up for us.
And jumping on the call at a late notice and everything, yeah, really appreciate it.
That's okay.
I know you're.
And I, um, I am anxious to get the money out like everyone else, you know, it's, um, I, I see the distress and the, and we are, we get a lot of thank yous here from the businesses. Some of them are actually crying when they come in and pick their checks up, so, um. The one thing we will, we don't have to do is we have to have a record of who you funded and their, and what their demographics are to report. But we, the funds we can disperse. We may not be dispersing funds until, like, the first of January. Just so you can let the businesses know because of the process of getting checks written and things like that, so. If we may not get the funds literally into their hands until after the Holocaust.
So, will you notify them then when they've applied and said you will receive the funds and it might not be until after January?
Yeah, we, we actually Denise has this, uh, she emails folks and so if you have anyone that is not email capable, we need to make sure we understand that so we can communicate because we've been using emails, uh, to make sure. And as soon as we approve the grant, we notify them, ask for a W nine, once they provide us with the W nine and then demographic information that the state wants or requires or the funding requires. We, that's basically, once we get that, then we can issue checks. But it takes usually about a week to process funds. You know, just because we have to have check, choose check signers and stuff, so. Everyone owes Ernie a new pen because he's been coming to our office and signing checks.
Well, she's right. All right, I think that's all the, so. Will you draw, draw up the new draft agreement or will Betty? Yeah. Betty, do you have time to draw, draw up the new draft agreement with the county?
I have the word document that was sent back and I can, I can do the modifications you ask. I will change the contract so that it's the I G A. and the contract match and, um, we'll send it.
Okay.
Uh, do you want to have a quick review, James, before, um, it's signed?
Um.
Issue signed?
Yeah, it has, it has to be reviewed before it's finally signed.
Right.
But, uh, contingent upon approval of this board, I'd be happy with making that motion right now, honestly, and move forward. If, if it was in approval, then I would make the motion right now. Um, um, or have, I'd be comfortable with a motion of that kind. One, one last thing, though, on the I G A. We're under terms, I think it's section four, subsection A, um, the I G A, I think it's on page two. Um, it says December second through March thirty-first.
The March thirty-first is actually the day, the final closeout date of these funds that the state gave, so that was why we put that date in. We can use January thirty-first to make sure that we have everything, you know. The recording and everything will be done by then, so I'm, I'm comfortable with January thirty-first.
Okay, that's fine, um, because honestly, I, the, um, it did, it wasn't really clicking in my head with the March thirty-first number because these funds have to be distributed by the end of the year, so.
I know.
Yeah, okay, all right.
But the la, the language that the state used is that you can, you can obligate the funds, but you don't have to have them dispersed. And so we were allowing for the dispersal side of this, yeah.
Okay.
But we will have the funds out.
Okay, so did you make a motion?
No, I have not made a motion. I just said I'd be comfortable with one of that nature, but, um, are you comfortable with the January thirtieth? Thirty-first, the thirty-first, yes. Yeah, we can, if we can add that, that amended so that, uh.
Right.
So would you like me to make a motion?
Sure, go ahead. I'll add it to that one.
So I would like to accept the agreement with Lake County and SCOED, the new agreement, contingent on any clear requires or approval of the board and then. Anything else?
Uh, no, that's fine. Um, I, I will second the motion to, uh, approve the I G A. between climate and Lake with SCOED. Uh, between Lake and, uh, Lake County and SCOED, contingent upon final review of this board.
Okay.
Uh, motion made, we'll second it and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you so much, Betty.
Thank you. I will get that to you sometime within the next hour or two.
All right, thank you so much.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so, um.
Thanks for your.
Yeah. Jill, would you like to come up? Our next discussion, we are going to be discussing two thousand twenty-one licensing fees for restaurants and hotels. You can stay there. You're welcome to come up to the chair.
Can I stay here? Can you guys hear me with my little tiny voice on the mask on?
Yeah, we can hear you, yes.
Um, so it's the time of year that we have to send out fees for restaurants, license and R V. Um, to pay for the next year and they have had a really hard year. And so I was requesting there's some counties that are paying all those fees or half those fees to kind of show goodwill to those businesses. So, anyway, I sent out an email and you had wanted to talk about that.
So what is the total amount of the fees?
So, do you have the total there?
I do, um, well, the total fees for twenty twenty-one, which is all we're talking about here is thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three.
Yes, and I think it will be a little bit less, but I didn't have time to go through, but it won't be more than that.
Okay.
Okay, so my, this is my problem is, and it's not really a problem.
I can give it lots.
Well, I got one problem. The restaurants are based on seating, their license fees.
Mm-hmm.
And we've taken their seating away and I'm not saying we. The state has taken away their seating deal. And to make them pay for seating that they can't use is ludicrous to me. Um, I realize you're just doing your requirements on the state, so this isn't about you, it's about the state. And so.
I hear what you're saying.
I totally hear what you're saying and that's why I should have sent these out already and it's been overwhelming to do that.
I, I appreciate it. I appreciate you doing this so much.
Mm-hmm.
If we paid for this, where could we get the money? And will it apply under our COVID losses?
Yes.
So, I'm gonna make a motion that we pay their fees. And try to recoup that money from. Sorry, guy. Sorry, uh, that we recoup that from our COVID losses. That's all I have to say about it.
Okay, motion on the table. Pay the two thousand twenty-one, uh, motel, restaurants and R V. parks fees in full. Uh, thirty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars. And have those losses, have that recouped through our careers dollars. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Can we have a discussion?
Uh.
Sure.
Sure, okay.
Is there any other businesses besides those that you've listed that have had a hard time because of the shutdowns? Besides R Vs, motels, restaurants?
Not, well, I'm sure they're half. I'm hoping that these are the only ones that we license, so these are the ones that we are in touch with.
Good.
But like, my hope would be that the other grants would help the other businesses.
Okay.
Things, I.
I appreciate you very much bringing that forward to us and I'm thankful we can do something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that, Jill.
And it might be a little less, so I'll get you the final number by today.
Okay.
And then, um, I don't know if you guys would want to, or I could do a letter explaining that you're doing this to put in with their new license for the year or.
That would be awesome.
You guys could sign it or something.
Just letting them know. And, and honestly, I, I also want to make sure that it's conveyed that you were actually the person that brought this to us, that public health is looking to help, help these restaurants out, so I, I don't want it to be, this is my thinking on this. I don't want it to be just the county commissioners decided to do this. I think it needs, some credit needs to go to the public health as well for the fact that you guys were the ones that brought this to our attention. You let us know about this because you are actively looking for ways to help our businesses and keep them going.
That's all.
So, um, however you choose to word that, I will leave it up to you, but I'm making a note.
I'm fine. You can take all the credit. You know, because a wise man told me one time, if you don't take the credit, you don't ever have to take the blame.
Okay.
I just threw it. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, that's good, good discussion on that. Um, yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
But we will.
Thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you guys. That'll be wonderful.
And I think, uh. Yeah, no, well, and I'm going to probably just, just for, just to let everyone know, I'm gonna be bringing this to the governance committee at A O C. And I'm gonna be discussing this because I know that other counties have done this. Um, if not in full, they have definitely paid a portion or half of the registration fees and everything with the, the public health. But I think it needs to be brought to the state's attention. That they're still requiring full payment for the seating of restaurants that they have reduced by over half in, and in some cases, not lately. You don't have to comment. I'm just, I'm just uncommenting. I'm saying that I'm going to be bringing this forward because I think it's a good argument to be made.
Yep.
And thank you for bringing it forward.
Great, well, it was your reason. Thank you. All right.
All right. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Um, final discussion and topic for our special session. Interim landfill manager. Jake?
I appreciate what you commissioned to do for our community here. I wish I had a proposal that was going to help all of our businesses and take all the pain away from the community. I don't, but I do have a proposal. Um, unfortunately, our landfill superintendent resigned on Friday. In order to keep moving forward, I'm proposing that we appoint a, an interim director. So after talking with you commissioners and our facilities and property manager, he has agreed to take that on if that's what we would like to do. So we would pay him a stipend. In order for this to work, though, there's a couple of other things that need to happen. We talked a little bit about this contract with ACOM. Currently, we contract with them to do our ground water testing. There's several things that they do for us. Um, we found out recently that we're a little bit out of compliance and we need to get caught up. So, Commissioner Winters and Buddy had a conversation with ACOM two weeks ago. And so they have sent us a proposal, which I think is excellent. It lists all the tasks that need to be completed. And that goes a step further, um, just as an example. Um, rather than just saying, you know, there's a semi-annual environmental monitoring report summarizing the results of the monitoring will be prepared. They go one step further and say, a draft of each report will be provided to the county for review prior to submission to D E Q. So then they will submit the annual and semi-annual environmental monitoring reports to D E Q on behalf of the county. So that goes through every one of those steps. Um, they're gonna be responsible for making sure those things happen. We still have to do what we've got to do and every one of those tasks, there are, um, the assumptions. And those assumptions are what we need to provide, what we need to do to help them get that done, but, uh, we're not hydrologists, we're not environmental engineers. And most of the landfills that, that we've spoken to have a more similar agreement to this than what we currently have. They're using, um, this, these environmental engineers to do what we don't know how to do. So it doesn't make sense really that, that we, you can try to be preparing these reports when that's their business. It's, this contract that they proposed is a not to exceed seventy-four thousand dollars. Seventy-four, seventy-four five oh five. Um, we have been paying in the past sixty thousand dollars or more each year.
How much?
Sixty. And, and this contract will be the same. I mean, we may only pay sixty, so not to exceed, they're going to be, they're going to be invoicing us each month. We're going to be paying on a, um, on a service, we're gonna be paying for services on a time and material basis. What do you need in help?
Okay, oh, the contract for the ACOM?
Yeah.
Well, it is, it, it, it's pertaining to the landfill manager position.
So I think in order for the, for this to work, to have, but I think it's necessary, no matter what you do in the future. No matter how we decide to do it, if you decide to build this as a full-time position, if we decide that this is working and want to continue doing that on a permanent basis, we need this kind of a contract in place, in my opinion.
Okay, so Melanie did make a good point, though, because the contract itself isn't on here, even though we can have the discussion. We didn't say that we would have this on here as an action item today.
Okay, yeah, this, this number, okay, we need a, um, we need an interim superintendent out there.
So it's your recommended, recommendation plus it's Buddy Ness, who was the previous landfill director supervisor or manager.
Yeah.
To to have an interim person until we can figure out whether we want to hire somebody as a full-time or leave the interim person as is. Correct?
Correct. Quick question, going back to the contract.
Okay.
Um, how, it, it was not to exceed seventy-four thousand. That's the current proposal we have in front of us right now. But we have a contract in place with them right now. How much is that not to exceed, exceed? Because you mentioned sixty thousand or more that has been in the past. So I'm just curious whether or not it's already exceeded what it.
So can we talk about this thing? I don't think we can talk about this because of, this is a special meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I'm just, I just was curious on it because it does pertain to the landfill super, uh, landfill manager position, so.
Yeah, and what I found in that was the contract didn't, okay, include that, but the proposal at some. Yeah, and what I found in that was, the contract didn't, okay, include that, but the proposal at some point in the past did. So there was an agreement that it wouldn't exceed a dollar amount, but I, I don't know what that is.
Okay, no, we'll, we'll stick to the, just the landfill manager position, and it'll work out some of those other things. Uh, that's fine.
Yeah, these are the details, um, we can talk, but there's one third element there that I, you know, we kind of need in place, but it's not, we're, we'll be saving some money, I mean, if we, saving a lot of money by doing this.
Okay.
Hopefully it will work, in order to make it work better, we have working out there a temporary employee that was hired for six months to help with the closure of the landfill. Um, if we were able to keep him on full-time, and who, as a regular employee, he would be entitled to our benefits, but we'd still be saving over thirty thousand dollars if we were to continue that on an annual basis. So, the contract is part of that, um, another body out there to help with the scheduling.
In a full-time position.
Full-time position is part of it, um, our facility and property manager taking that on, that's a, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Those kind of three things all go hand in hand, but today, what, what we need to, to make a decision about is, we want to appoint Dave as our interim director, or interim superintendent.
So as far as discussion goes.
True.
When Mr. Ness put in his resignation, he actually put it in a couple of weeks ago, it wasn't Friday.
Yeah.
He, Friday was his last day, and so I just wanted to make that for the record.
Right.
What, what happened is, is that it left us with one of the commissioners to have to take that responsibility on ourselves, otherwise we have employees out there that it doesn't look like they're being supported with a supervisor. And for their benefit, I want them to have a supervisor. Um, there's not one of us commissioners that has the time to take on the supervisor role, nor I don't think it should be our role. And, and so that's why I wanted to have this meeting, one of the reasons, is so that we can, in the interim, to buy us time to, whether we hire somebody full-time or not, isn't the reason, this buys us time to go over the contract, go over the things that we need to talk about, um, to get information from the interim supervisor, so we can build on this to make the dump, the landfill, um, support the landfill, support its employees, and to make it successful, because all of us know that it's gonna be success, success. We just have to get all the moving parts in play, and so that's the reason that I wanted to talk about this, is so we can figure out, buy us some time, look at some things differently, without being behind the eight ball. Um, we need somebody out there, and so, that's why I brought it. So.
Yep. Um, I guess really, all for me, I'd like to have Dave maybe say a few words in terms of, you know, we, we're kind of throwing this in your lap. Do you have any, anything to say on this subject, I mean, was gonna be, pretty much making a motion here that's gonna be making you the interim manager of the landfill, so.
Possibly.
Possibly.
Well, I, I think Mark was right on what, I can give it the count, or the count, well, by the counting, some time to where they get, because there's a lot of moving parts to this, there always has been. And those moving parts haven't quite mingled in together, and it's been that way as long as I can remember. So by, you know, you, if you just fill it in a full-time position, well, that's not fixing all the moving parts, that's just throwing someone in there and, and, and you guys still don't know where all the moving parts are, so, I feel that I can go out there, help find those moving parts, and maybe I don't find fully all the moving parts, but it gives you guys an opportunity to help me find those other, whatever that may be, if it's a full-time position, or it is going with an engineer and a part-time manager, or not part-time manager, yeah, full manager, but.
Right.
You know, right, where, where that interim is gonna manage the operations of it, to, where those moving parts are mainly, and then the, the engineer parts of DEQ stuff, all that, that's when your manager comes in and puts it all together, so. I, I, my opinion, I think you guys are heading in the right direction, I find out, to find out where are all those moving parts, where it does move, move smoothly. Even if it is a full-time position, you don't go with me or whatever.
Right. You know, we've had some discussion in prior meeting, I believe it was last week, where we discussed the fact, there's a lot of things that we don't know as commissioners about landfill, and exactly all the moving parts and the boots on the ground, so having, having you out there, and, and I think we're probably gonna take on a little bit more of a role, hopefully you'll involve us with, just as you kind of discover things, as you're finding things, because we are gonna have to act on a contract with ACOM, and having a better understanding of things, um, and how they're working, is going to be dependent on the feedback we get from you once you get into this interim role as well. So, I just wanna make sure that, uh, you have an understanding of kind of what our expectations will actually is by. Yeah.
And I wanna make one other point, too, is, this, this position is very, all of our supervisors' positions are very important. This will buy us some time, so when Commissioner Elect comes on, he can kind of get his feet under him, and he can also be part of the decision that we make, and I just wanted to throw that out there because it's very important. Like, when we first started out, I mean, we got sworn in, went into a meeting, we, we had to make all these decisions, um, I don't want that for you, I want you to be able to have some time to kind of weigh things on your own, and I think that plays a role in buying us some time and.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
How long will the interim tag last?
Uh.
Does that be part of the motion?
I think we talked about six months.
Yeah, we talked about a six-month, uh, period, basically, and we'd reevaluate, and I think that likely before that six months is over, we may end up even coming back to reevaluate things, to see if, if things are not working perfectly.
I, I don't wanna set up like a rigid timeline.
Yeah.
Because if, if, if three months go by and Dave goes, hey, you need to hire somebody, I can't do this, then we can act.
Yeah.
And, and then three months' time, we can see if things are starting to roll, but we wanna give him enough time that we're not cutting these out from under him, too, and so, I don't know if we need to set up time.
Within six months, I think we'd be fine, if we could come back, reevaluate within a six-month period, would that be?
What's the problem?
Well, we just need to set a time period where we're going to revisit it, I mean, we don't need to make a decision then, but, um, really, it needs to be flexible, because it's gonna be, at some point, Dave's either going to take this on, and it's gonna make sense, and it's all gonna come together, or it's not, Dave's gonna come and say it's not working, but at some point, it's our responsibility to make sure we have that discussion, so whatever that time period is, is the time to revisit that.
So I'm, as I'm drafting an appropriate motion, would within six months be appropriate? Okay. Within a six-month time period, we have to revisit this and reevaluate the process, and like I said, I, I believe that we will likely be having a lot of signs on whether or not we think it's going to work or not before then. Um, okay. Do you have any additional questions?
I'm waiting for the motion you're drafting.
Well, now with that, I will make a motion then to, uh, appoint Dave Berman as the interim landfill manager. Um, and, uh, to be revisited within a six-month timeframe, to reevaluate, um, success or, or whether or not we need to move in a different direction.
Correct.
Motion's made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Dave is so now, you're up. Either Dave or Dave and I, at some point in the near future, will come back to you with the contract proposal, and possibly affect a new position out there.
Okay.
A new regular position.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't make a motion on any of the.
Right.
On the full-time position out there, I, I know that may be a direction that we're headed, um, obviously the contract and everything else, but we'll work that out as we go forward. So.
Okay.
And we may, and there's nothing that, there's no absolute urgency in getting that, uh, ACOM contract in place before the end of the year?
No, we already have the contract that we're working on, um, that we're working under. The problem is, we, we are out of compliance with a couple of reports, we do need to get those caught up.
Okay.
This new contract addresses those issues, but I'm sure we can still get them addressed without.
And I would make sure that Dave gets up to speed on those as quickly as possible, so that he can, he can start working with DEQ, and we can start having those conversations as to.
One of the reasons we, one of Dave is because he handles all the facility contracts with us already, and so.
And it is a facility.
Yeah, well, he and I were talking about it, you know, this ACOM contract, it, it's really similar to what he already manages up here. He's not an engineer, but engineers say, here's what, prepare everything and signs off on it, so.
Mm-hmm.
Same kind of deal.
Okay. With that?
Wait.
Oh, good.
Sorry.
Sure. You have any questions, sorry.
Uh, just to comment, uh, so this interim is in addition to his current duties as well.
Correct.
Yes, yeah, just making sure that.
So, no, we're not firing. He's not getting out of any addition.
In case somebody has any questions, it's in addition to.
So this has been a duty that has been, um, put upon the road department, um, roadmaster. Um, who else had, uh?
Uh, well, Rick Demilleu is the road.
Rick Demilleu was paid a stipend to perform this function. Kevin Hawk was paid a stipend, and it was around twenty thousand dollars, so that's what I'm proposing, is a twenty thousand dollar stipend.
Yeah, and typically.
On an annual basis, obviously not paying up that upfront.
Weekly.
The, no.
See, Commissioner, I'm, I'm gonna address Commissioner Elect Schulberger's question.
Correct.
This just gives us one more reason we can fire Dave. Ooh.
Just, just checking.
Sorry, my sarcasm comes out again.
Yeah. Um, typically, to my understanding, a lot of, uh, these county run landfills are ran more as a public works position, and that's why in the past, it's fallen under the road superintendent to manage, but I think under, with Dave's, um, position in maintenance of facilities, I think it can fall right in line with that as well, and I think it will complement a lot of, uh, a lot of the other projects that we have going on, having him out there, and he's got good leadership, uh, qualities, and working with, uh, a lot of different people, and right now, that's kind of what we need out there, so. Sounds good, um, any additional questions? Okay, so with that, we will adjourn this meeting at six minutes past eleven.
Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.